Jose Weza, I'm joined by Councilwoman Wendy Grul. And I understand that Councilmember Dennis Zine will join us soon. At least, that's what his staff member told me. And this is a meeting of the Audits and Government to Efficiency Committee. We are holding a short meeting today, should go by fairly quick. We are holding this meeting, it was originally scheduled for next week, but since we will not be in session due to the inauguration, historic inauguration, we had it today. So if it's okay with my colleague Wendy Grul, we will continue items two through five, so that those files do not expire. And the item that we will take up today is item number one, which is an audit of the Department of Public Works Special Revenue Fund. If that's okay? And as we all know, in this time of budget shortages, it's critical that we look at under every stone to see what is available for potential revenue. The audit that we will discuss today is an example of that idea. And what we will do is first listen to the Controller and her report, or her staff. And secondly, we'll ask to hear from Public Works to respond to the audit, and we'll go from there. So the clerk can read item number one, please.
Item number one is the City Controller Report relative to the Special Revenue Fund Audit at the Department of Public Works and Communication relative to the Department of Public Works' response to the audit.
The Controller's office here?
Mike Lee from Controller's Audit, Chief Auditor from the Controller's Office. We issued the audit report on August 27, 2008. The Department of Public Works manages over 250 special revenue funds, with a total balance of $1.2 billion. So based on risk assessment, you know, in our sample, we eliminate MICLA funds and bond funds. So there were 57 special revenue funds with a balance of $334 million under the charge of Public Works. And we tested and looked at the document more in detail for 29 of the 57 funds. Okay, our objectives were, of the audit were, evaluate, to evaluate the adequacy of internal control over the selected funds, and to determine if transactions are made in accordance with a specific purpose for which the special funds were set by the ordinance. Then determine whether the condition reasonably warranted the creation of the fund. And our, we found that, you know, even though we did not note any inappropriate expenditure in the fund, we looked at it, we found the department did not actively monitor the fund's status, meaning, you know, many of them were inactive. So 19 of 29, we looked at it, had no departed or expenditures for at least three years. So it's been, we call it, very inactive. Then we also identified almost $1 million sitting idle, which can be transferred to the general fund, in 16 inactive special funds. And I believe Public Works already transferred 436,000 of them to the general fund. And then another, the rest of them, 522,000, transfer of the 522,000 is currently pending. Then we also found that Public Work did not charge 5.4 million in city labor cost against Griffith Observatory Trust Fund, and did not report the actual project cost to the Oversight Committee during the construction period. So the department also had to return $193,000 in interest to the state, because the department did not submit a closeout report for the project within the required 60 days of the project completion. So the department, we recommend that the department report the actual project cost in the monthly progress report from now on, you know, which was already complete, but any construction project, we recommend them to report the actual project cost in the monthly progress report. And transfer, you know, unexpended available money of $3.3 million from the Griffith Observatory Trust Fund to the general fund. And also, we found that the department did not review outstanding encumbrance. And, you know, city's very, now the department has to be diligent to transfer unspent monies to the general fund. And they, about $424,000 were finally reverted to the general fund in April 2008, which, if they were diligent, I think they could have reverted, you know, one year earlier. Then we found some minor reporting requirement they overlooked, and they could have done a better budget estimate on one of their special funds. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could remain up here while we ask the Department of Public Works to come up and present your response to the Controller's findings.
Good afternoon. Let's see. Good afternoon. Craig Blumenquist, Director, Public Works Office of Accounting. And basically, we carefully reviewed the findings of the Controller's office and kind of summarize in our perspective what has occurred here. The Controller identified 3.8 million in funds that could be transferred to the general fund, as they indicated in their report. And of that 3.8 million, 3.3 million was for the Griffith Observatory project. So talking about the Griffith Observatory project for a second, it wasn't until August of 2008 that the final nonlabor payments for this project were completed, which included a payment of 2.85 million to the general contractor in settlement of a claim which had amounted to $12 million. But due to the negotiation skills of our Bureau of Engineering, they were able to reduce that claim from $12 million down to 2.85 million. So with, project funds were being held for this potential settlement with this claim from the contractor. Once the payment was made to the contractor in the settlement, that left actually 4.16 million in remaining project funds for the Griffith Observatory, which is more than the 3.3 million that the Controller indicated in its audit report. And the CAO wrote an addendum to the first financial status report in September 2008, which directed how these funds of 4.16 million were to be closed out. And they directed that .9 million would be going to the general fund as revenue, that was interest income that was earned for CIEP funds that provided funding for the project. And they said that .3 million should reimburse the general fund for prior year's staff costs. .4 million should be retained in the MICLA funds, which was a source of funding for the project. And 2.5 million should be returned to the CIEP for future projects. And so the Office of Accounting of Public Works has carried out all of the CAO's recommendations, which was part of the first financial status report, with the one exception of transferring the .3 million to the general fund for prior year's staffing costs, primarily because we're still trying to get encumbrances disencumbered from the SMS system. And because of system upgrades in SMS, we've had problems getting those amounts disencumbered. But once we do, we will have completed those recommendations with respect to the Griffith Observatory. So as I mentioned, the Controller's audit identified 3.8 million that was available for transfer to the general fund. And that left $436,000 that could be transferred to the general fund, when you consider the 3.8, less the 3.3 that they said was for the Griffith Observatory program. That left $436,000 that could be transferred to the general fund from 10 assessment funds, primarily. We have since transferred that amount to the general fund. And basically, the reason why we had not transferred those funds previously is a little complex, but it essentially has to do with the assessment function in the Department of Public Works has been transferred from one organization to another over time. First, it was in the Bureau of Assessments, which was abolished, and that function was then taken over by the Bureau of Engineering, then moved to the Bureau of Street Lighting, and now it's been partially moved back to the Bureau of Engineering. So as these transfers took place, there was significant institutional knowledge of the fund and the procedures that had been lost. And then also experienced staff had retired, let alone, in our own Office of Accounting, we've experienced vacancies due to the budget shortfalls of people that are actually general funded for these activities. However, in light of this audit report, and understanding the importance of monitoring these special revenue funds, we have undertaken, in accordance with one of their recommendations as well, to monitor and review all of our special funds to identify potential other amounts in funds that need to be transferred. And we have, we completed that, that review in early December of this year. Now, the Controller's audit also identified 522,000 in six drainage district funds. And now drainage district funds were funds that were created in the mid-1960s to collect from developers' amounts to construct and later maintain facilities in drainage districts. These amounts were spent to some extent, but in other cases, the amounts have remained in the funds, and some of the funds have not shown activity for many years, but some have shown activity more recently. So in light of this audit, we asked our Public Works Bureau of Sanitation and Bureau of Engineering to review the needs for, continued need for these funds in the drainage district funds. And the outcome was that these drainage districts' funds still require this money for construction of drainage district facilities and maintenance of those facilities. And they had developed a plan, the Bureau of Sanitation has developed a plan for each of these drainage district funds, which would utilize them within the next three years. So essentially, capital construction made from these funds would be spent directly from the drainage district funds, and maintenance funds would be reimbursed to the Stormwater Pollution Abatement Fund. And the reason that would happen that way is the Stormwater Pollution Abatement Fund is a source of funding for the Bureau of Sanitation, so it could spend these amounts in the first instance, and then be reimbursed from these drainage district funds. Now, what we want to do with these drainage district funds is contra to what the Controller's Office recommended in their audit report, where they recommended that these, these funds be returned to the people that pay them, or if they couldn't be located, that they should, the money should be distributed to the general fund. But Public Works' position is that, since these monies were collected from the developers for constructing capital facilities and providing maintenance of those capital facilities, and the need is still there, there should not be any reason why these funds should be transferred to the general fund. And that was substantiated by advice we received from Assistant City Attorney assigned to Public Works. And we mentioned that in our response of the audit report. There were a couple of other findings, which I believe Mike mentioned a minute ago. It had to do primarily with reporting on the financial status report of a couple of our funds, which were required under the ordinances which established those funds. That was the, we call it the Clark's Fund, Fund 47R, which is the Central Los Angeles Recycling and Transfer Station Fund, and the Integrated Solid Waste Management Trust Fund. We hadn't reported on those, and I'm glad to say now that the Bureau of Sanitation completed those reports in September. Now, another finding that was mentioned was that the department significantly underestimated revenues each year for the Street Damage Restoration Fee Fund. And these are funds that fund the operations of the Bureau of Street Services. And to the extent that the revenues are underestimated, the difference would have to be picked up by the general fund. Now, the estimates are made up jointly, are made jointly between the Bureau of Street Services and the CAO's office. So we agree that we're going to take a closer look and to refine this estimating process to get the estimates higher, but not exceeding a reasonable amount that we're going to be achieving that amount of money. And then as far as their finding number five, which indicated that the department did not revert 424,000 to the general fund for the Central L.A. Recycling and Transfer Station, as explained in our response, that was largely due to a lack of staffing for this facility, which was taken over quite recently from a private enterprise. But that has been completed. The research and the disencumbrances have all been completed as of April 22, 2008. So essentially, I think those are the significant points that got raised in the audit, and those are our responses. But we'd be glad to answer any questions. We have a person here from the Bureau of Sanitation, and also have representative from the City Attorney's Office.
The Controller's Office, are there any issues that you are, you are still in disagreement with in terms of the responses from the Public Works?
Okay. I think Public Works now have, has implemented all the recommendations, except for one. I think transferring $522,000 for six drainage district fund. And we have received their response with additional information very recently. So the office is in the process of evaluating the response now, so.
And my final question is, would it make sense to look at other, the other 21 funds, to see if there are any other monies that can be returned to the general fund? This just looked at 29 out of 50.
You know, it's, you know, you know, audit is based on a risk assessment. We, 57 funds, we ran a FMIS record, and more or less, we did a test review of activities. So pretty much, I think, you know, meaning, we did not spend time doing field work on others, but I think we pretty much covered all 57 funds.
Grul?
Sorry, just a few questions.
Sure.
Still losing my voice. If, I know you indicated that, you indicated these had been dormant for three years, most of them for three years?
Yes, 16 inactive funds, you know, it's either for three years, and some others are two years and one year. So mostly, we selected our sample of funds which are inactive more than one year.
I know the Controller's Office is looking at special funds and, you know, all across the city, and how many different categories we have. Do you think there's a, as we look kind of broader, like at financial policies in the city of Los Angeles, that we have in Budget Committee, for example, that says, there either one has to be reported by the department, or that they can, you know, there's a policy that says they can only stay inactive for such and such period of time? Do we think there's some structural changes that might be recommended? Because I don't know, you know, no disrespect about Works, but what if, if the Controller's Office hadn't audited, could they have sat there for, for more years? And that's not just in the last year budget, but the last three, three years. So is there a trigger mechanism more so than anything else that you'd recommend?
Well, you know, I'm not in position to make a recommendation, but I don't have any doubts that if we, you know, spend the time and look at other departments' special fund, I'm sure there will be some inactive funds, you know, funds sitting there could be transferred to, to the general fund, you know. So, you know, I think Controller's Office, kind of, you know, with limited resources, we are doing a risk assessment and trying to cover as much as possible.
I think we try, maybe try to help, help you by having, instead of you having to go audit to find it out, that there be some, some reporting requirement by the departments overall in the financial policies, so that, that would help us, you know, potentially. So I don't know, maybe I'll ask the CLA's Office or Attorney's Office, see if there's a way we can add into our financial policies that any of those funds. And again, some of them may sit dormant for a variety of reasons, but at least we have a, a reporting mechanism, so we know what those are. I know the FMIS system, hopefully, and all of that technol, you know, technological changes will assist us in that way. But I'll ask my staff, maybe, to work with you all, and see if there's a structural change that we could make on this one. And on the item related to the drainage funds and Clark's and so forth, is the City Controller's Office, I know the City Attorney's Office has said it has to be spent in this way, so that's the only reason it's unresolved. Is that correct? Or if, are you going to review the recommendations by the department as to how it would be spent under the City Attorney's advice as to its limitations of going back?
Yeah, I believe we'll look at that also.
Okay. Excuse me. That was there.
Thank you. And finally, I, a while back, I introduced a motion to explore the feasibility of implementing a graffiti tracker system using some of these, the special revenue funds from Public Works. Any thoughts on that?
Well, we'd have to identify which special funds would be available Well, we'd have to identify which special funds would be available to use for that purpose, since most of our special funds, nearly all of our special funds-